All right, everybody's here. We're going to get started with the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple announcements tonight. The Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services Thanksgiving Food Drive is underway. Non-perishable food items may be dropped off at the Montgomery Township Building or the Montgomery Township Community and Rec Center now through November 9th. Drug Take Back Day is October 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Giant on Nap Road. If you have unused medications, this is a great opportunity to dispose of them properly with the Montgomery Township Police Department. Needles and syringes are not accepted at this event. Our Fall Curbside Leaf and Yard Waste Collection is scheduled for Saturday, November 25th. All leaf and yard waste should be placed on your curb in biodegradable paper bags the night before the collection. For more info, please visit montgomerytownship.org. Is there any public comment tonight on any item not listed on the agenda? If so, come up and state your name and address. No public comment? All right. Announcement of Executive Session.
Yes, the Board of Supervisors met an executive session today, starting at 6:30 to discuss personnel matter and three active ongoing litigation matters. All topics discussed, works, appropriate executive session topics under the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Sunshine Law.
Thank you. Next is number six, our Consent Agenda. I'm going to move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented for the following: the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 Board Meeting, and the payment of bills for October 23rd, 2023. So, any public comment? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, tonight we have some donations. First one is going to be a donation to the Montgomery Township Historical Society, and we are going to be presenting a check for $6,000 to the Historical Society. We have Lisa Segal, President, tonight to accept the check. Come on up. If you have some words to say.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's always put to good use. And we have two events in December coming up. December 10th, from 1 to 4, it's a Sunday, is our Holiday Open House. Please come. And on December 21st, the Metropolitan is doing a dine and donate for us, and they will be donating 10% of their proceeds for the day to the Historical Society. So that's a really nice.
What date was that for the dine and donate?
The dine and donate is December 21st. You do not have to come in and mention Historical Society or anything. You just eat, take out, whatever.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Great.
So, all ahead.
All right, well, I'm going to bring this out to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next one we have. Presenting a check in the amount of $5,000 to the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. Amanda Musselman, Executive Director, is here. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for this continued support. Monco Anti-Hunger Network is an inclusive alliance of over 60 different food pantries and free meal providers all across the county. Unfortunately, hunger is continuing to be a growing crisis in our communities. Since 2021, really at the height of the pandemic, we've seen a 50% increase in need of our services. So, this couldn't have not come at a better time, and just thank you for your continued support.
We're happy to help with that. This also, we have a check in the amount of $3,000 going to the Peak Center, North Penn Senior Services, and we have Elizabeth Beal, Executive Director, to accept the check.
Thank you so, so much for supporting the Peak Center. With your help, we're able to provide so much for our seniors, wonderful meals, and a lot of really engaging programs to help them remain active in their, in their community. And so, we really couldn't do that without the support of so many community partners, including all of you. So, I thank you so much. And if you're ever at North Penn Commons, come on in and say hello.
We're so happy to support this cause. All right. Last but not least, we're going to present a check in the amount of $1,500 to the Visiting Nurse Association Community Services. We have Marcus Primavera, Director of Strategic Partnerships, and Denise Fritara, Director of Development and Administration of Children's Programs, with us tonight.
Everyone, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Challenges of the pandemic, community health has been incredibly important for the residents of Montgomery County. The programs we offer, the patients we serve, really appreciate the support that you have given us. We have served the community, Montgomery County, for 100 years. Hope to do another 100. So, thank you so much. We're very honored. We appreciate it.
Anything?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much to all of you who do so much to help residents of our community. We really appreciate it. Next thing we have is number eight, Mobile Crisis Collection. Colocation. Mobile Crisis Colocation Team Presentation, sorry.
Right. Yes, this evening, Mark Multi, Director of Montgomery County, Montgomery County Mobile Crisis, and Shane Madden, he's the Director of Forensic Partnerships for Montgomery County Mobile Crisis, are here to brief the Board on the Mobile Crisis Colocation Team Partnership with our police departments.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Sorry. I don't know who let us out together. Sorry. So, we just wanted to update you guys on what I appreciate about, you know, there's 50 police departments in this, this county. We really partner with them all. And over the years, not only with Montgomery Township, is it a resource that we are to them, but it really truly has become a partnership in the, really the essence of the word, in meaning that we want to be able to support officers and this community in becoming more safe and reduce repeat calls. What we're doing now with colocation is having crisis workers here physically in the building. I think that proximity creates even more referrals, more of that intentional partnership, and decrease in the need in the community. And what we do as Mobile Crisis, we're 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We're a free service. And really, we don't have a set definition of what crisis is. Whatever that is to a family or an individual is really unique to those. And so, to be able to support them in getting connected to long-term supports, helping them with de-escalation over time. And one of our really big goals is to decrease repeat contacts with law enforcement. In 2022, we had over 9,000 individuals open with us in Montgomery County, and in one of five of those were referrals from law enforcement. So, we just wanted to talk about how grateful we are for the colocation and to have more proximity, to have the crisis workers physically in the building, and that has, we've only seen increased referrals and positive outcomes.
We're very thankful to have you. Any de-escalation that can happen is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Next thing we have, a couple things on planning and zoning. Update on zoning hearing board application, ESW America. Carolyn?
Thank you. At your last meeting on October 9th, we reviewed some new zoning hearing board applications that came in, and the Board learned of an application for ESW America, 200 Progress Drive. At that time, after learning about the proposed installation of an above-ground fuel tank, the Board's consensus was to send the zoning, the solicitor to oppose the application at the zoning hearing board. Subsequent to that, the Fire Chief and our Planning and Zoning Director met with their operations and chief technical officers to discuss and obtain more details about the proposed tank. And Chief Wegman is here tonight, and he can update you on the meeting. And I believe the applicant's attorney is here as well, as he has been advised that this was going to come before the Board this evening. Bill, do you want to?
Thank you. We did meet last week, Mary Ann and I. We met with the ESW people to talk to them about our concerns about the tank. I think it was some exploratory as to what the purpose of the tank was, as well as, again, what are our concerns and how they could mitigate them. It was a productive conversation from our end. Mary Ann and I expressed concerns about fire and fire suppression. So, we informed them that they should reach out to their sprinkler company, which happens to be Tilly's, which is in town, to see if there is any fire protection features it could be, could be utilizing in the event that there was a fire. We talked about spill control, where there was only, there's a spill alarm, and there's a 200-gallon containment unit surrounding the tank, even though the tank has an internal spill control unit. But we advise them that we would, you know, we would want them to make sure that they had materials on site, so that if there was a spill and fire did respond, that they could already start mitigating the spill. We advise them that there's local and state regulatory reporting requirements, that we wanted daily checks of the tank, that we'd have to see their emergency operation plan. I think the thing that we discovered most about is that this isn't for fueling vehicles. It's a tank as part of their process. They would have one delivery annually into the tank, and they could explain it way better than I can. But the concern that they were holding their own gas station is not what the purpose of the tank is.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's John McShay. I'm here on behalf of ESW from East Burnet Gray. We have prepared a short PowerPoint presentation, if you would like to see, just kind of explain a little bit more. The chief did a good job covering it, but the purpose of the tank, where it would be placed on the property, and some of the safeguards that the ESW has put in place for the use of the tank. As you know, this is a special exception application. We will be before the zoning hearing board next week, but we're happy to share as much information as you guys would like to.
I think we probably would like to see it.
Sure.
We did have some questions and.
I should say, this is Michael Streiksgeer, who's here with me. He's the Chief Technical Officer at ESW. ESW is located at 200 Progress Drive, been there for about approximately 24 years. And what they are, they're a leading engine and vehicles emissions company, and specifically, they work with diesel emission control. So, the tank, the fuel tank is proposed to be used in connection with their emissions testing. Michael has a few PowerPoint slides to go through with you here, and he can also address some of the concerns raised by the Township and the Fire Chief, their conversation last week. So, turn it over to Michael now, and feel free to interrupt at any point if you have questions.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present something about our company, what we're planning on doing, why we're asking for this, and answer any questions that you might have. So, please interrupt me if there's anything that you see that you're concerned about. I'd be happy to talk about it. So, first of all, who are we? We are called Emission Solution Worldwide. We've been around for 24, 25 years in this area in Montgomeryville. We're headquartered here. We have two facilities. We have one on Park and one on Progress Drive. One is set up to manufacturing, manufacture emissions control devices aftermarket, as well as retrofit. And the other facility, 200 Progress, there's a little bit of both. And we also house a testing facility. So, this is diesel engine emissions testing. That's sort of our bread and butter business. And diesel emission controls is really what, what we've been doing since 1998.
So, is it primarily like fleets of vehicles, diesel vehicles that you're testing for emissions?
We're testing, we have, we have the capacity to do both. Primarily, it's engines, but we can also bring in a vehicle up to, you know, 575 horsepower, tandem-driven tractor and test that. So, that's really the purpose of it. And we, and I'll go about, I'll tell you a little bit more on what exactly we're doing, but that's sort of what we do there mostly. So, we are providing testing services to a variety of customers. We have a couple of big OEM master service agreements. So, it's original manufacturers, like you see here on the right, Cummins, Volvo, Navistar. And this is generally driven by regulatory requirements. So, we make sure that these engines, once they've run a certain amount of time, that they're still within their, their expected life, that they still are within the regulatory level of emissions. When you put these on a test stand, and you run them on a certification cycle. So, to do that, we have to be very process-driven. So, we are, we follow the code of federal regulations, because every little part of this testing procedure is described, so that wherever you go, anywhere in the world, and you follow that procedure, the result should be the same. And so, we're CFR compliant, we're also ISO certified, and we're CARB and EPA recognized. We're really proud of that. Not everybody is going to be that. And most of the data that we generate goes straight to regulators. So, it's really, really important for us to follow processes. We're also getting audited by CARB. We're also being observed. As testing, they come out, personnel is there, they look what we do. And we also work for some of the regulatory agencies. And one example is Environment and Climate Change Canada. We're working on some of this right now. And, and so, that's what we've been doing. Now, as you probably have heard and witnessed yourself, emissions regulations have become a lot more strict, so to speak. And the same thing is true for testing. And that means we have to step up, and fuel quality impacts the emissions that come out of a combustion engine. And so, the regulators, and there was, decided that from now on, especially with greenhouse gas concerns, all this testing has to be done with certification fuel. So, that's not the regular diesel. It's a highly refined, or more carefully refined, I should say. Diesel is never highly refined. I'm sorry. But it's not carefully refined fuel that we would have to use. And so, these test campaigns have to be run with a single batch of fuel of this cert, cert fuel, the certified certification fuel. And it has to be, the fuel has to be analyzed before the test campaign. So, we analyze that for carbon content, hydrogen, et cetera. So, we can better account for the emissions and also the gas mileage. And so, right now, our main customers request from us that this is the kind of procedure that we continue to work with. And that's why we're asking for fuel storage, and we're asking for a tank. We looked at all the tanks. We thought there's one that's, that's really good. It's self-contained. I'll show you a little bit more about it. And it has enough storage that we would only fill up once a year. So, so that's really important. Hence, we're asking for the 7,700 gallon.
So, can I, can I interrupt with a question?
Sure.
Why is it so important to only fill the tank once a year?
It's important to us because we can't mix batches. So, if we get fuel in, we have to send it off to three different labs, and we get an analysis. As soon as you mix it with something else, or when you, in the middle of this, this test campaign, when you switch fuel, you have to start over. So, it has to be one, it has to be one batch of the same fuel to do this right, because you're depending on, on that being, being of the same quality and the same, same type of fuel. So, you can compare all these tests. Some of these tests, you swap out a part, and you look, how does that compare with the baseline as you started out? So, if you have a slightly different fuel, this may impact that.
So, how long have you been doing these testing services already?
Yeah.
How long have you been doing that?
We've been running this lab commercially since 2010. It's a little bit before my time. I joined ESW in 2013. So, that's my best guess.
And how do you currently handle it?
Currently, we can use pump fuel, and we have some small tanks that we run out of. But we can't do that going forward. And so, so that's, that's really the issue that we're facing.
So, is it that you can't do that, or you prefer to do the larger tank?
We can't really do that, because you need a one homogeneous batch of fuel, and the small tank doesn't suffice. One test campaign, we can burn up to 2,000 gallons. So, that's, that's the issue that we're facing. So, for us, I mean, we're a small company. We're total 65 people. We're not, you know, we can't just, our means are limited. So, so for us, it's really clear, we can't move, we can't do anything else. We need to really think about how can we run this business, and how can we continue to run this business? So, we want to do this safely. So, so that's why we're here. That's why we're asking, you know, to, to, for a permit to do this right.
Why does it have to be an above-ground tank?
So, we can inspect it. We can make sure. We're leasing the property. If we ever have to move, or something happened to the business, somebody else would have to deal with it. Above ground, we can inspect the tank on, on a regular basis. We know whether there's anything going on, any corrosion, all of that. So, that was important to us. Plus, it's a lot less infrastructure for us to build up.
Is the size of the tank that was chosen, I know that they're manufactured, different categories, sizes, give or take 1,000 gallons here or there.
Right.
Was that size chosen because that's what you anticipate going through within a year?
Well, we, we looked at, our customers now are even asking us, how much fuel are you using per year? So, I have to supply reports. And so, our projections indicate we'll probably use about 5,000 to 6,000 gallons a year if we're going, if we're going with what we hope that the business will, will bring. So, so that's why we, we've chosen that. We could go with the smaller tank, but that would also mean more traffic coming in. It would mean possible delays. But that's why we've chosen that, because we think that's, that's, you know, the right amount for us.
But for your manufacturer, even the smallest tank that they offer is thousands above what our special exception requires, my understanding, correct? So, even if you want the smaller tank, you would still be needing the relief. About 400, I think, is what we are.
Yeah. I think that's my understanding. Yep. I knew to this too. So, it's the first time I'm asking.
The special exceptions in excess of 550 gallons, so.
So, what if there were a tank half the size of what you're asking for? I mean, you say that will cause more traffic. How much more traffic? Is that just one truck that comes to deliver that fuel?
Essentially.
So.
I mean, it's also for us more logistics, because as we, as we, here's the tricky part. As we run down, then at a certain point in time, we need to really time it right, because, you know, we have this fresh, fresh batch, then we're getting something in, then the analysis from three different labs. We're going to very good labs, Southwest Research, et cetera. It takes a couple of weeks. So, that would be downtime, because then this new mix would have to be analyzed before we can continue. And so, the timing would be tricky. We'd probably have to do this more than once a year, or twice a year, just because, you know, we, it's getting more complicated.
We also felt that limiting a delivery, a large tanker truck coming in onto the property once a year was important. Those that would be transferring the fuel, are they more akin to a scientist than, instead of a mechanic? What is the expertise that, that is taken?
We wouldn't transfer the, the fuel, and I'll talk about this too. We would have a hard line. So, we would actually suck it from the tank into the building.
Into the?
Into the building, because there it goes into smaller, smaller day tanks to fuel each test cell. So, so we're not, we're not going there with, let's say, some kind of a hand truck and a transfer device, or a drum to fill it up, and then take it to the building. It would just be transferred via a pump. So, that's, that's the plan. So, it's, again, it's not a gas station. It's not something where we fill some kind of a pail and bring it in. Now, this, this is sort of a supply that is being pumped into the building, and we have holding tanks there. The pump is, you know.
We do have a plan that.
Yeah.
You can show the location.
Yeah. Thank you. But so, that's where we are. And I think we talked about all of that. Here's the tank. It's the Grandi 30 that I show you. There's a picture right from the website. It's a UL-rated tank. It's double-walled, so it's self-contained. That was attractive to us. This, so the Cadillac of tanks, if you look for one. It's sort of the footprint of, of one of the shipping containers is, has, you know, a rigid structure. It's easily inspected. Again, the double wall serves a couple of purposes, and we'll talk about that. And it has all the safety features that you can get these days on a tank. And for us, clearly, this would not be here in the picture. You see that nozzle that, those are add-ons that you can get, but that's not what we want. I mean, this fuel that we're talking about, the cert fuel runs between, in the best case, $8 to $35 a gallon. We're not going to put that in any vehicle. This is very expensive stuff, and it's, again, carefully monitored. So, where are we going to put this? This is kind of a rough map of 200 Progress Drive. The shaded part is the paved area, and we submitted a larger picture of that. So, if you look at the details, so we're going on to the east side of the building. There's already a fenced area, and I show a picture of that in the next slide. And we want to extend that fenced area, put the tank there, and that would allow us to be 131 feet away from the building. That's important. And also have enough room on the outside of that, if anybody needs to drive around there, which we don't really have any through traffic, and that's a parking lot. And we have delivery on the other side of, on, on the south side of this. So, this is really where we thought this would be the best location for that.
Would there be safety features like bollards around it?
I'll get to that. So, so, here's a picture. There's an existing fence, and precisely, they put one of the metal recycling containers there, so you get a good idea sort of what that is. There's an eight-foot fence there. We would extend that to include the tank. And we would put, what I showed you in the schematic is, is bollards. So, I talked to our building manager, and he thought six foot, six-inch bollards would be the right size. And so, that would be the location of that. And there's still plenty of room to go around it. And. And, um, it's also hides it from sight. So it's not something that sticks out like a sore thumb. There's a big thing for fuel.
Do we have room for the fire engine or anything to get back there?
Yes, we love, I mean, this, this is the first time seeing it actually on paper. Oh, we did talk about dimensions.
So then I want to just touch on our operation. Cause you know, everything we do is like before we've even started an engine and bring an engine into a test cell, we have checklists that we go through. Again, we're ISO certified. So that would also, uh, apply to the tank itself and the operations. So we'd have a daily visual inspection of the tank. So before we even activate the fuel flow going into the building, we would do a weekly inspection. We do that on all the test cells. We do that on our engines to make sure the integrity of the tank, um, is, is, or check the integrity of the tank. And we also have on, and I'll talk about the spill prevention, there's a couple of features in the tank that we can use for that. And then we'll have a yearly inspection where we want some outside company to come in, make sure that we don't have condensation on the inside, corrosion, that sort of thing. Because we're concerned about not just because of corrosion, but also water in the fuel is not good. In diesel fuel, you have algae growth and all of that. That impacts what we do. So we don't like that.
So your inspection is an employee, are they certified by someone to perform these inspections?
The visual inspection, no. We would bring in a company to, to do the inspection of the tank.
But that's the yearly inspection that you have somebody that is outside?
That's a, that, that was a concern. We're happy to do that. But that was, that's our plan.
Is there, is there a certification process for an inspector? It, does one exist?
I would think so. Cause some companies, uh, make it their business to do that. So I would think that there's at least some kind of training or certification program in place, but I don't know. So we would go by, you know, we, we would look for a company to do that. We go, we work with several outside companies. Again, I would, uh, we would pick somebody that, that we think is legitimate. I mean, we, to speak that, we're working with Tilly on the building. We've been working with them for, for years. And we're using them to make sure that what we do is safe and we don't have a fire danger in the building. So we would use the same kind of mindset for this as well.
No, I think I understand that we're not trying to impede on your business, but we need to maintain health, safety and welfare for everyone in the township.
Yeah, I totally understand. That's why we're here. We want to do this right. You know, I'm yeah. And so, so we also, what we do for all of our equipment, we would include that into what's called a failure mode and effects analysis and FMEA. So whatever we do, it's, it's safety, it's also potential hazards, et cetera. So we always take measures. That's part of our ISO certification is part of what we do. Then, um, chief talked about to us about spill prevention, what are the right measures to do that? We have the periodic inspection. So we look if there's any corrosion, if the, the paint is, is coming off. Uh, there are only so many ways a tank can get perforated. We have the tank design that, that really helps. It's double walled, fully self-contained. So if the inside springs a leak, the double wall is larger, it can, it can contain all the fluid that comes from the inside. There's also, uh, room for monitoring equipment. So one thing that we do in other places where we handle fluids is we use, um, level sensors and we use little switches that indicate there's a fluid there. So we have that in our analyzer equipment. As soon as fluid builds up, it sounds an alarm. So we're going to put that in the outer shell as well. So we have an alarm. There's an overfill protection. It already comes with it with an alarm. We, we want to use the, the fenced enclosure, the bollards. There's really no through traffic. So if we're thinking about mechanical impact, what if a vehicle bumps into it? We're in a parking lot where really we don't have any traffic back there. Uh, so again, personnel parks on that side, deliveries are on, sort of on the other corner. There's no reason for anybody to drive there. And we have the bollards. Then we have an MSA of with Lewis Environmental. So they, they offer rapid spill response. So we signed a, an agreement with them. As soon as the tank purchased, they would come out and look at the site as far as I understand it. And they are available 24 hours. So they claim, and I think, uh, the chief mentioned that they're doing a, a pretty good job in the area. And then we also want to store, uh, onsite flexible berms to contain any potential spill. Let's say something happened where we had a spill. So at least we can contain it right away. And until help arrives, then that can essentially pump it up.
And how, how flammable is this certified fuel? Is it like gasoline that we see at the, at the tank?
We're talking about diesel and, and this particular fuel, I have some analysis here. The flash point is around between 165 and 180 F. And so if you look at the, the distinction between flammable fluid and combustible fluid, it actually falls into the category combustible fluid. And an old timer would tell you that you can put a match out in diesel. So clearly it's, it's not gasoline. It's, it's kind of like the, the heating oil that you use, uh, at home if you have an oil heating, uh, heater. So that's the kind of fluid we're talking about. Fire prevention, again, we have a tank design. It's UL rated. It has a vent, a flame, uh, proof vent that can keep it from pressurizing essentially. If it got hot, let's say the building caught in fire. Hot. So first of all, the outer wall shields it. Then it's vented. Um, then we want to place the tank 31 feet from the building. There's a concrete wall. And then between it and
Is that the requisite setback for, uh, storage? Is any, uh, Mary, it's not here. I don't know. Is 31 feet sufficient for that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And then also I want to point out that, that between the tank and the building, currently there's a marley cooling tower with a large water reservoir. So it's not only that we have this concrete wall there and, you know, fires go crazy. You don't know what happens. But we also have a large reservoir of water. We have something else that shields it because it heat transfer, radiation, et cetera. So that would be somewhat limited. And then we get inspected by Tilly, um, annually and also by the fire department. So if there's anything that, uh, the chief would point out to us, we had a, you know, our record is, is been one where we addressed all these issues. Um, and, and, um, you know, we contacted Tilly and asked them, what can you offer us to help? And, um, they haven't submitted their proposal. I promised today, but it hasn't, hasn't come out yet. So we'll, we'll follow their, their, uh, proposal. Um, that's what we've been doing so far. And, you know, we've added all the sprinklers, et cetera, that, that we needed. So this is essentially what I have to, to tell you about our plan and the need, why we need one. So in summary, storing this kind of fuel onsite at a sufficient quantity is essential to our business. That's why we're here. That's why we need to do that. Uh, we picked a tank that we think is very solid, UL rated, designed to prevent spills and fires. It's, it would be dedicated to cert fuel, nothing else. That's what, what, what we need it for. We minimize the, the, the travel that comes with delivery of fuel. We think it's located in a safe spot on the property. And, um, you know, we, we are a process-driven company. That's what we do. And this would extend to the tank as well. So we have audited frequently, uh, we're ISO certified and follow the CFR. And, um, given all of that, we hope that requests can be reviewed favorably.
Are there any tanks that are, that would be considered safer? Triple wall instead of double wall, uh, any, anything that could make us feel better?
I, I, this is the best I could find. I'm not an expert in tanks. To tell you that, but I think this is about as safe as, as you can find for that sort of, um, holding area.
You said you're waiting.
A holding device.
You're waiting for, um, some additional recommendations from Tilly with regard to safety protocols?
Yeah.
Um, do you know if they have, currently have any clients that have a tank of this size to, um, make recommendations?
Um, the first thing that I was told is that they did not know of any code or specifications for this. And they thought we should just get some purple K, um, extinguishers that are within 30 feet of, uh, the tank. And I said, okay, fine. See what else you could offer us to make us feel better.
We can certainly get that information for you though.
Yeah, I would like to see what, anything they recommend.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, do you know where any water? Do we have streams, any part of the Chaminade, anywhere near the building that we would need to worry about in the case of a spill?
Right.
We, um, when we were in the meeting, we brought up the GPS plan for that area. Um, there are some watershed basins that are in the area of, um, but the stormwater system was at the front of the building. And this is in the rear. So there, there's some definite, um, space between the stormwater and, and the back of the building. Um, and that was one of the reasons that we asked them to have spill control measures on site. Cause as the fire department, we don't have that. Logistically, we can't afford to carry that much material or have it on, in station. And it would take a, a while for the county to mobilize, to get out there to bring us that materials. Um, so we asked them to make sure they have enough that if there was a, a spill, that we'd be able to control it on their property. Um, and that was the reason we made the recommendation for them to sign an understanding with Lewis Environmental, that they could engage that process more quickly than the fire company could going through all the backdoor kind of procedures. So. I, I, I understand the recommendation for a purple K extinguisher, but what, what is a purple K extinguisher going to do when you have a fuel load that big? So we recommended that Tilly's maybe look for a fixed fire suppression system if, if that was the recommendation.
Okay. Well, I think it's nice to, um, have the extra information.
Printed out some hard copies of this?
Thank you.
Ten of them might believe it.
And it's the intent that everything that you explained and went through with the board, the same that you're going to be presenting to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah.
So it would be expected then that everything that you're explaining to us today would be testimony in that special exception hearing that you would have to comply with as either conditions expressly or complying with all the testimony of that you provide to the zoning board at that time.
That's right. Yes.
Would you be agreeable to additional conditions to the satisfaction of the, uh, township, uh, fire chief? Reasonable, as you've been discussing, or to, um, to what he would come up with between now and then, particularly related to any Tilly recommendations?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Do we need to make any decision?
And to, to be clear, so at the end of the day, the only time that anyone's really going to be tinkering or adjusting this to fill it would be that one time a year. Otherwise, it's coming out of tubes into smaller canisters inside.
We, we'd have the inspection, but we wouldn't take it. It's not, we don't want that at all.
For, for, for testing, no. Fuel's not going in or out by human kind, except for either the inspections or to fill the smaller tanks.
I would also feel better if there was more frequent testing by the professionals instead of once a year, maybe quarterly.
Yeah, we would have no objections to that.
Okay. And an employee who is certified by whatever company is out there. And let's make sure that this is the best tank for this area if we're going to go with this. I, yeah, you said you're not the expert. You, this is the best you found. That doesn't make me feel comfortable.
Well, I, I'm not an expert in tanks, that's for sure.
So really what we have before the board is, um, November 1st is the zoning hearing. Currently, the decision of the board was to send solicitor's office to, to oppose. If you'd take no action tonight, that would stand. Uh, there wouldn't really be any additional opportunity for formal action to sort of pull that back. Um, you can take action tonight to change that. You can take no action and let the decision stand. If you wanted to take some action to change that, you could have it pursuant to additional conditions to see if the applicants would agree to that tonight. If that is something that would address your concerns. Um, there, there are multiple options that, that you could pursue.
Well, I think none of us want to hurt a township business who's been here for as many years as you have. Our worry is just keeping everyone in and around the area safe. I mean, I don't know. Um, we do trust our zoning hearing board. Um, I don't, I don't know. It's a tough one.
But we could make it, uh, our, we could, I guess, rescind the, uh, sending a solicitor in opposition pursuant to the agreement, uh, the terms, correct?
Correct. And, and again, you, you could send me to ensure that those terms are carried out and that testimony was related today. And I could simply observe to ensure that these conditions were put in. Um, or we can perhaps agree ahead of time that they would be agreeable to certain conditions that you would like to see. And of course, it'd be up to the zoning hearing board to see whether or not they'd want to, to apply those conditions. But we'd make sure that those conditions, if agreeable, would be communicated one way or another. Um, whether it be the quarterly inspections instead of yearly. Generally, that, um, that all safety issues will be addressed to satisfaction of the fire chief. Um, and, uh, that they will implement, uh, any inspection processes recommended by Tilly Fire Solutions. Again, to satisfaction of the fire chief. Um, those were sort of the items that I saw today that was not on these PowerPoints. I mean, again, if they're going to stick to the conditions of these, this PowerPoint presentation, they've already would be agreed to. One delivery annually, the, the, the buffering, the, uh, the basin catch system, the, the artificial, what did you call it? An artificial?
Berm.
Berm. Okay. To, to stop, uh, the fire suppression, spill control. Uh, it seemed again that
The sensors, the internal sensors and the
That's right.
outer chamber. Yeah. Those liquid sensors.
So those would all be part of the, I think, condition that we've built into this anyways.
Um, well, my opinion would be that I would feel better if you were to go because you know our concerns and you know the feeling that we have. And you could certainly speak to that if need be.
Sure.
I mean, given that, I would, I would be okay removing our opposition and letting him go in, in place of that, if that's an option.
That, that is an option. I, I certainly can be there for the purpose of making sure that the conditions, whether it's what I've heard tonight, which I'm hearing that you'd like to, to see, uh, or impose, or at least requested to be imposed. Um, that, that the evidence presented before you today, or presentation, I should say, comes in as evidence to the zoning hearing board as it was represented tonight. And, uh, it provides some additional clarity for anything that happens between now and that hearing related to any additional recommendations. Um, uh, particularly related to the Tilly file, file, fire system recommendations.
So again, I don't want to speak for anyone. So I know what's
I'm still having a hard time with the size of the tank as well. So if there's, I know there's, it's an inconvenience. But if it could be half the size of the tank, I'd feel a little bit better with that. Um, but as far as the application, I would be agreeable. Um, I think you need to attend. You understand where our concerns are and why we have those concerns. So if the need arises that you have to be our voice, you're there.
What do you think?
And then are we then saying then, based on the additional information that they may bring to the zoning hearing, you sharing our concern, then letting zoning hearing make the decision?
Yes.
That's what we're saying.
If we're all comfortable with that every week.
Well, it's ultimately their decision anyway. We're just, we, we would just be removing our opposition.
Right.
Right. What do you think?
Um, I'm in support of removing the opposition. Um, and having the solicitor appear on our behalf to ensure that the conditions that we've discussed this evening are, are met. Should the zoning hearing board decide to approve.
Good. Okay.
So, so I'll be, I think then the So so I'll be, I think then the there was a motion before, so the motion would be to amend the the board's position to withdraw the opposition, but to send the solicitor to ensure compliance with the the presentation presented today and the conditions discussed. And any other recommendations of of the township staff, yeah.
Okay, so moved. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Understand.
Thank you for your time, good, good information for us to have.
Thank you.
What's that? Yeah.
All right, before we go to Chick-fil-A, can we get a score update? Five, one?
Yes, yes, that's.
Still five to one? What inning are we at?
Bottom of the eighth.
Oh, boy. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out. All right, let's move on to review of zoning hearing board for Chick-fil-A. Since your last meeting, the township received an application from Chick-fil-A. They are seeking variances from provisions to reduce the parking below the required fifty-two spaces to forty-four spaces. Maximum impervious coverage, minimum green area, minimum side yard setback and rear yard setbacks. They are looking to install two canopies in the drive-through lanes and to make modifications to the existing drive-through to create a second drive-through lane. They have discussed this with township staff. We have expressed concerns in the past about traffic going out onto three oh nine. Police chief I know has sent officers over as need be to tell them that they need to amend, you know, they're working within a certain footprint. So this is what they came up with and they need to go to the zoning hearing board for relief. So what we're looking for is if the board wants to send a solicitor to oppose it or just let the zoning hearing board render a decision based on the testimony presented that night. Personally, I'm fine with the zoning hearing board taking care of this, what does everyone else think?
I think they're qualified to do that, yeah.
Absolutely. Audrey? Okay. And then we have Raising Cane's. Preliminary final land development application. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing vacant building at eight sixty Bethlehem Pike, which was formerly occupied Bertucci's Restaurant, and construct a new twenty-nine hundred thirteen square foot restaurant with an outdoor covered seating area, open outdoor seating area and double lane drive-through with associated parking. They are here tonight, they have been before the planning commission, you also have review letters in your packet. And I believe the county planning commission had no comments on the application. Amy Farrell is here tonight with her client and can answer any questions or give you any clarification that you might need.
Good evening, everybody. She did an excellent job as usual, summarizing for me, she's still on my thunder, so I don't really have much to tell you. Other than that, this is, as she said, the the redevelopment, proposed redevelopment of the Bertucci's site. We have been through the review letters with the planning commission. We are, will comply with all review letters, there were no major items outstanding. We have seen the draft, excuse me, of the resolution and don't have any objection to the resolution itself. Would note, there are two waivers, one, the traditional sort of technical preliminary final waiver that I think you generally see with land development applications these days. We do have a technical partial waiver related to shade trees that we did want to just raise to make sure that the board understands really what's being requested there. There is a provision in your ordinance that requires that shade trees be planted within parking areas so that within five years of planting, they provide shade to each parking space within the site. This site, as you know, is fairly tight, it's a little complicated. We are landscaping everywhere we possibly can landscape. We're also maintaining a whole series of existing trees that are quite mature, that we don't think it makes sense to take out. As a result of that, we're not sure that in five years we're going to technically meet the requirement of that provision. But we did meet with the township engineer on site to review the landscaping layout and the landscaping plan. And we're all confident that we're meeting the spirit of that of that ordinance provision. So while it's a technical waiver, we are generally providing landscaping above and beyond what's required on the site.
The planning commission was very pleased with it.
Is the landscaping set up to be sort of like a rain garden so that it'll help with stormwater runoff?
So we do have some, we we could actually show you the the landscaping plan, it's it's pretty substantial. There's there's this combination of shade trees, parking lot, landscaping, and then some pretty significant landscaping in and around the property or around the building, excuse me.
And so my question was about the nature of the landscaping. It, will it be sort of constructed in such a way so acts as a rain garden to absorb some of the stormwater runoff from all the impervious surface?
So that is stormwater, we're utilizing underground basin.
Okay.
It has the sort of, you know, just by its very nature as landscaping, it will have some obvious stormwater management capabilities. But it's not, the the stormwater management requirements on site are not met by the landscaping, they're met.
That's met through the the basin.
Right.
Right. I just, I just, when Wegmans went in and then they put in all of that landscaping, it was just designed, I don't know, maybe it was part of the the whole configuration though, including, you know, the under underground basin as well as the the rain gardens. But it seemed like a more effective way to to help manage it. But I'm looking to Carolyn and the other professionals in the room, you know, for guidance here.
The existing landscaping area between our site and Bethlehem Pike does have a natural swell that is growing to an inlet. So that is some of our landscaped area that's currently how it's already being utilized. We're not really proposing any changes to that area, except we are increasing the landscaping on the whole site, but especially along there, our herd line is coming in further away.
We do already have sidewalks there, correct?
Yes, there's already an existing sidewalk along here, but just proposing to maintain the convention.
Any other questions? Everybody okay with it? If you look on the resolution, item number ten, the township is actually installing sidewalk as shown in the applicant is going to reimburse us for the cost. And then they will handle the annual maintenance and repairs responsibilities going forward. Because we did emphasize to the applicant when they came in, the board's desire to make sure that everyone who comes in looks at walkability, even if parcels to either side of them do not have it at that time. And because we're, this is a redevelopment, we made your wishes known and included that in the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think everyone's good with it. So I will move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, approving the preliminary final land development application with requested waivers for the Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, everybody.
There's no change in the score.
No change in the score.
Top of the ninth.
Okay, administration and finance, approval of the twenty twenty-three audit engagement letter. Brian Shapiro.
Thank you, good evening. Mally has submitted an engagement letter for the twenty twenty-three annual audit. Mally would audit the financial statements of the government governmental activities, the business type activities and component units, each major fund and the remaining fund information of Montgomery Township as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and for the year that ended and ended and related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprised of Montgomery Township's basic financial statements. The engagement letter lists an estimated cost of thirty-one thousand five hundred for the annual audit. Staff recommends that the board of supervisors approve the engagement letter with Mally for the twenty twenty-three annual audit.
All right. I mean, they've done our audits forever, there's no reason to change, you're still happy with them.
Yes, I I mean, they, I believe they do good work, you know, they're thorough in their things. One of the things, you know, we would probably come back just for, just for best practice to do RFP next year. It's not recommended this year because we've switched softwares and they're going to be auditing two systems. So I'd rather keep the same auditing firm for that purposes, but next year come back with an RFP, though we're happy with them just for best practice.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? I'm going to move to approve the attached engagement letter with Mally for the twenty twenty-three annual audit at the estimated cost of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
A second.
There is no public to comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Then we have twenty twenty-three distribution of Act two oh five pension state aid. Ryan Shapiro.
Annual general municipal pension system state aid allocation for twenty twenty-three has been received in the amount of six hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. This is an increase of twenty-five point two three from the twenty twenty-two state aid allocation. State requires that the board of supervisors adopt a resolution approving the allocation of the state age to the pension systems for its employees. Based on the twenty twenty-three minimum municipal obligation to the police and non-uniform pension plans and based on the AG three eighty-five state certifications, it is recommended that the twenty twenty-three Act two oh five general municipal pension system state aid be allocated as follows. Police pension plan, four hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. And the non-uniform pension plan, two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. There is no budget, the state age provides the township with assistance in meeting its annual pension funding obligation. It was factored into the township's budget at the twenty twenty-three funding rate. It is recommended that the board of supervisors approve the allocations as indicated.
Okay, anybody have any questions? I'm going to move to accept the recommendation to allocate the twenty twenty-three Act two oh five general municipal pension system state aid to the police pension plan in the amount of four hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. And to the non-uniformed employee pension plan in the amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars, ninety cents.
Second.
No public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right, so we're skipping fourteen, correct?
Yes, we're going to do.
We're going to do item fourteen, which is our capital projects and purchases as part of our budget work session, which is this Friday. Excellent. Department reports, any? The department reports are in your packet, there is no oral report tonight for the board from any of the departments. Excellent. Any committee liaison reports, anything interesting anybody has to share?
I was unable to attend my meeting, so I have nothing tonight, sorry. I was at planning commission and we've just seen what's been at planning commission, so that's about all that happened there.
Toni, what do you have? The parks board meeting, there was a more discussion on the request for additional pickleball courts as well as a request that came in. We did have someone appear and make public comment and requested lights for tennis courts. And so there was no recommendation made by the the parks board. They wanted to investigate further, you know, whether or not there was really a need for the lights and the tennis court. And what 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 else were they looking into, they were going to specifically look at some other areas.
They wanted to see the usage within the parks as well.
Yeah.
See if the settlement was being utilized to its fullest capacity.
Yes.
Okay. Reasonable.
So there was no recommendation at this time.
All right.
And we met the seniors, Matt, we did not have a quorum, we had two members uninvited, we could not make a meeting, but we still had a meeting. Just couldn't vote on anything. But just gearing up for our Santa Day or calling it Day with Santa, what is it?
Breakfast with Santa.
Gearing up for that, which is coming up, we'll be here before we know it. And then also we had another Medicaid presentation right after our meeting the other day. And we're having one Wednesday evening at the Rex Center that most of us, if not all of us, will be in attendance for with Nancy, who's been doing a great job of this, so.
Great. Anything else, anybody? All right, well, thanks, everybody, for everything and motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we still five to none?
Yeah, there was, there was a man on, now it looks like we have three out, so I I guess we're going to go.